Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Chitam?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Blatt?
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Jim Jones, representing Blazing Grace Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It's the National Day of Prayer, so I just wanted to pray over Psalm 95. Oh, come, let us sing to the Lord. Let us shout joyfully to the rock of our salvation. Let us come before His presence with thanksgiving. Let us shout joyfully to Him with Psalms. For the Lord is the great God and the great King above all gods. In His hand are the deep places in the earth, the heights of the hills are also. The sea is His; He made it, and His hands formed the dry land. Oh, come, let us worship and bow down. Let us kneel before the Lord God our Maker, for He is our God, and we are His people of His pasture and the sheep of His hand. Today, if you will hear His voice, do not harden your hearts, as in the rebellion, as in the day of trial in the wilderness when your fathers tested me. They tried me. Though they saw my work, for forty years I was grieved with that generation, and said, "It is a people who go astray in their hearts, and they do not know my ways." So I swore in my wrath, they shall not enter my rest. Lord, I just pray that we do hear You and that we do adhere to You, and we come to know You and have a relationship. The times in this world are changing, Lord. There are things happening all over, and no matter what, no matter how, no matter who, You are still on the throne and You are still in control, and we will worship You and glorify You forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. With that, we'll move on to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular city council meetings of April 3, 2025. B. Material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for a period of April 1 through 15, 2025. C. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of William Schumer to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, replacing Dave Paco Crone, whose term expired. William's turn will begin May 2, 2025 and expire May 2, 2027. D. Pocatello Arts Council appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Tim Hackelman to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, filling a long-term vacancy. Tim's turn will begin May 2, 2025 and expire May 2, 2028. E. City Council decision, final plat approval for Aspen Grove subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the subdivision of approximately 5.56 acres of land into nine lots located on 2806 South Fifth Avenue, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as outlined in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick, and it's seconded by Council Member Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have six proclamations tonight. First will be read is Frontline Workers Appreciation Month will be read by Council Member Chitam. Historic Preservation Month will be read by Council President Lurick. Day of Prayer will be read by Council Member Mangum. National Drinking Water Week will be read by Council Member Nichols. Childcare Provider Appreciation Day will be read by Council Member Paulson, and Municipal Clerks Week will be read by Mayor Blatt. Council Member Chitam.
City of Pocatello proclamation. Whereas frontline workers are the builders of our community, exercising curiosity, compassion, courage, and creativity to provide essential services that ensure the safety, health, and education of our residents. And whereas over nine million healthcare workers across the United States serve in hospitals, clinics, and long-term care facilities, often placing themselves at risk to provide life-saving care. And whereas teachers dedicate their careers to shaping the future of our communities, with over 3.7 million educators in the U.S. providing knowledge and guidance to our youth. And whereas firefighters respond to an estimated 36 million emergency calls each year, over 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers nationwide work tirelessly to uphold the law and ensure public safety, and Emergency Medical Services, or EMS personnel, respond to more than 240 million calls annually. And whereas Pocatello has 78 firefighters, of which 26 are paramedics and 52 are emergency medical technicians who respond to 9,303 calls in fiscal year 2024. Whereas Pocatello has an average of 96 sworn officers who respond to 29,627 calls, and an average of 18 emergency communications officers who responded to 129,953 calls in 2024. And whereas frontline workers embody the essence of builders, flexible thinkers and constructive problem solvers who respect the dignity of all people by dedicating themselves to overcoming challenges and reuniting communities. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of May to be Frontline Worker Appreciation Month in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to join in recognizing and honoring the heroic contributions of our community's healthcare workers, teachers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, emergency communications officers, and EMT/EMS personnel.
Let's have a chief here. Come on up. We have some orders tonight.
He was here.
Congratulations. I guess you're gonna have to go explain it to the chief.
Thank you.
Absolutely. There you go. Thank you. If you want to say a minute, a thing or two.
Wasn't prepared to say.
Yes, thank you.
Whereas across the country, community-minded Americans are revitalizing historic neighborhoods and downtowns into places we want to call home. These vibrant, inclusive communities nourish our bodies, support our families, and feed our spirits. And whereas at the heart of each revitalization effort lies a unique cultural heritage, one that's inextricably linked to the historic buildings where people live, play, and work. And whereas historic preservation helps community leaders unlock the potential of their historic fabric to promote economic and cultural prosperity, foster equity, and encourage sustainability. And whereas we believe all Pocatelans deserve to engage with their history in our community, yet as a community, we have work to do to fill in the gaps of our cultural heritage in order to tell a more complete Pocatello story, a story that stirs us all to take pride in our shared heritage and inspires us to create an even more perfect union for generations to come, all while acknowledging and confronting the harsh realities of our past. And whereas, Pocatello's historic sites are irreplaceable. From icons of architecture to archaeological sites, these physical reminders expose the diversity of our experiences and the history we share. We seek to empower neighbors, partners, and individuals to protect historic sites in the community. And whereas we desire to drive investment in our historic places through changes in policy, catalytic rehabilitation projects, and innovative place-making work, where preservation and economic development sparks joy, inspires wonder, and connects us to our shared history in ways that positively shape our future. And whereas preservation work strengthens communities, breathes new life into neighborhoods, supports a healthier planet, and builds a more just and connected society. The theme for this year's National Preservation Month is Harnessing the Power of Place, celebrating the countless ways, big and small, in which preservation creates identity, culture, and value in our community. With the community's support, we can connect Pocatelans and their past to each other, to their past and to each other, and help inspire a better tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month in our community, and call upon the people of Pocatello to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Can't see.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I do have something real quick. I see you guys have a pretty stacked agenda tonight, so I'm gonna make this really quick. Thank you, Mayor Blatt and City Council. It's an honor to accept this proclamation for Historic Preservation Month on behalf of our-
Tell us who you are.
Oh, yes, excuse me. I'm always terrible at the introduction. My name is Marty Viscar. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission and here for the City of Pocatello. Again, thank you all for having me here today. It's an honor to accept this proclamation for the Historic Preservation Month on behalf of our community and all of us who care deeply about protecting Pocatello's past. This year's theme, Harnessing the Power of Place, reminds us that preservation is more than saving old buildings. It's about using and honoring the places that shape our lives to build stronger, more connected communities. In Pocatello, our historic places tell powerful stories, from the architectural icons such as the heavers or Valentine buildings, to the historic neighborhoods where generations have lived, worked, and gathered. These places ground us. They carry memory and they hold potential not just for remembering who we've been, but for whom we want to become. Preservation work strengthens community fabric. It breathes new life into our downtown, supports sustainability, and sparks a sense of pride and belonging. But just as important, it calls on us to fill the missing chapters of our local history, to ensure that everyone in our community can see themselves reflected in the story of Pocatello. Thank you.
City of Pocatello proclamation. Whereas the Congress Public Law, by Public Law 100-307, as amended, has called on the President to issue each year a proclamation designating the first Thursday in May as a National Day of Prayer. And whereas throughout our history, Americans have turned to prayer for strength, inspiration, and solidarity. And prayer has played an important role in the American story and in shaping our nation's leaders. And whereas, from the earliest years of our country's history, Congress and Presidents have set aside days to recognize the role of prayer has played, the role that prayer has played in many definitive moments in our history. And whereas Americans should be thankful for the liberties that allows people of all faiths and beliefs to worship or not worship according to the dictates of their conscience. And let us be thankful for the many other freedoms and blessings that we often take for granted. And whereas our prayers and thoughts go out to men and women of our armed forces and many selfless sacrifices they and their families make on our behalf of this nation, as well as the police officers, firefighters, and other first responders who put themselves in harm's way every day to protect their fellow citizens. And whereas we must remember those who have been affected by natural disaster at home and abroad in recent months, as well as those working tirelessly to render assistance at a time when around the world we're facing uncertainty and unrest, but also hold resurgence of hope for freedom and justice. Now therefore, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, hereby do proclaim May 1 to be the Day of Prayer in Pocatello, and invite all citizens, as their own faith, belief, and conscience dictates them, to give thanks for all the many blessings we enjoy and ask for guidance, mercy, and protection for our community.
Jim Jones was supposed to say that, I think, and he left us, so we'll move on.
City of Pocatello proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of our life, our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure of communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to the consumers' taps. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shone a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source water from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 to the 10th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week in Pocatello, and further encourage all citizens to recognize the value of water to our community and seek opportunities for education regarding and involvement in local water issues.
Somebody shows up, huh?
Appreciate it.
A few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Levi Lusk. I'm a utility data technician with the Water Department. I also serve as the Community Outreach and Education Coordinator with the same department. So we'd just like to thank you guys for joining other communities nationwide and supporting Drinking Water Week. The Pocatello Water Department is observing Drinking Water Week by recognizing the vital role tap water plays in daily life, the infrastructure that is required to carry it to and from homes and businesses, and the critical work that our water professionals accomplish around the clock to ensure the delivery of quality tap water. To commemorate Drinking Water Week, we will be holding an open house at our facility on North Arthur, where the public is welcome, to come and learn more about the vital role clean water plays in their daily lives, and how everyone's involvement is critical to maintaining safe and clean drinking water. We will have representation from multiple city departments to help our citizens better understand how our water is protected, cleaned, and delivered throughout our community. So that open house is gonna be, it's gonna begin on Monday, May 5, and it goes through Thursday, May 8. And our doors will be open from 8 to 5 on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And on Tuesday, it will be open a little bit longer, from 8 to 7. So we invite everybody to come out and share the joy of water with us, and learn a little bit more about where our water comes from, and how we get it to your house, and how we treat it, and all that good stuff. So thank you guys so much.
Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing
childcare providers, early childhood educators on this day. And whereas early childhood educators provide a safe, nurturing environment for the enrichment and development of millions of children across the nation, making them a vital force in our economy. And whereas early childhood programs, primarily small businesses predominantly staffed by women, are still recovering from the health and financial challenges brought on by the pandemic, while working tirelessly to meet the growing needs of families. And whereas early childhood educators have been and continue to be a critical lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. And whereas the future of our society depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, and supporting high-quality childcare is a worthy commitment to ensuring a brighter future for our children. And whereas early childhood educators frequently encounter significant challenges, such as low wages and limited resources, while dedicating themselves to providing essential services to children and families. And whereas early childhood educators deserve recognition and support for their dedication, resilience, and essential role in shaping the next generation of leaders, thinkers, and innovators. And whereas investing in early childhood education and the professional development of early childhood educators ensures a more prosperous and equitable future for our children and families, strengthening our community and broader society. Therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim May 9, 2025, to be Childcare Provider Appreciation Day in Pocatello, Idaho, and encourage all citizens to support and understand that early childhood educators play a vital role in our community by fostering individual child development, strengthening community well-being, and driving overall economic growth.
Hold on, just a minute.
One more.
Procrastinators. All right, you ready? All right, you guys ready?
Yes.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. There we go.
Super. Thank you.
Hold on, I wasn't in that one. Let me stand up.
Thank you.
Nobody got the joke. That's cool.
London just made a shot.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Blatt, City Council members, community members, and early learning providers. I'm Tenille Call. I'm Director of Education for United Way of Southeastern Idaho, and I want to thank you for this meaningful proclamation recognizing our early learning providers. It's an honor to stand here on behalf of a community of educators who show up day after day with dedication, compassion, and resilience. Our early learning providers have faced continuous challenges, from staffing shortages to public health crises, but they have never stopped showing up. They remain a steady, nurturing presence for our children, adapting, innovating, and giving their best in the most uncertain times. We deeply appreciate our providers, not only for the work they do, but for the heart that they bring to it. They invest in our greatest natural resource, which is our children, laying the foundation for a lifetime of learning, growth, and possibility. There is no more important work. On behalf of our community, thank you again for recognizing their impact. Your support makes a difference, and I would encourage all of us to reach out to somebody that made an impact in your early life and thank them.
Thank you. part of the local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, thank you, rendering equal service to all. Whereas city clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas municipal clerks strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the municipality through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blatt, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4 through May 10, 2025, as Municipal Clerk's Week in Pocatello, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Connie Kendall, deputy clerks Aubrianna Resindis and Shawnee Satterfield-Ferrin, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform. I think we should have a 20-minute speech from both of them.
Next year.
Next year.
Aubrey's gonna sing a song next year.
They were threatening to sing and all that stuff, and we're pretty excited about it, but they're not doing it. It doesn't look like it. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Okay, guys.
We will move to Agenda Item Five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. May 8, 9 a.m. City Council Work Session. May 13, 6 p.m. to 7 p.m. City Council Town Hall Meeting. Topics will be summer programs at the library and Parks Recreation. May 15, 9 a.m. City Council Budget Meeting. May 15, 5:30 p.m. Clarification Meeting. 6 p.m. Regular City Council Meeting. Other events: May 3, the 2025 Portnoy Valley Fund Run Series begins with the Spring Scamper. For more information or to sign up, visit the city's website or contact Parks and Recreation. May 3, citywide cleanup at Caldwell Park from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. There will be a pancake breakfast. May 3, Zoo Idaho will be opened every day. May 3, there's a lot of things happening on May 3. May 3, Free Comic Book Day at Marshall Public Library. The event begins at 10 a.m., and supplies are limited. May 5 through 8, 31st Annual Water Week at the City Water Operations Facility, 1889 North Arthur Avenue. Open house hours are Monday and Thursday at 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., Tuesday and Wednesday at 8 a.m. to 7 p.m. May 10, City Auction at Primetime Auctions. May 11, Mother's Day at Zoo Idaho. Mothers receive a half-off admission price when being accompanied by a paid child. Dog licenses expire June 1. Beginning May 1, the city is offering half-priced dog licenses through the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or the animal shelter. And a congratulations to all of the Idaho State University graduates. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Six, Public Hearing Annexation and Zoning Application, Bridges at High Terrence. This time is been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Bill Isley, represented by Sunrise Engineering, to annex and zone 81.78 acres, more or less of land located north of East Center Street and southeast of Vista Drive. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request following a public hearing held April 9, 2025. Okay. All right, then I declare the public hearing open. We'll be looking for...
Good evening. My name is Bill Isley, and we are developing that 81-acre parcel. Can I give this?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Bill, you have 10 minutes.
I won't need near that. I think that'll make it easier to see the annexation portion, to see the overall picture of- It's these two quarter sections here, that one acre, and it comes down, and then it leaves out right around that because that's already in the city limits. The density on that development will be 66 really, really nice lots on the 81 acres, so it's not very dense at all. And that'll be the last step in getting Center Street connected to Vista, and then the next challenge will be getting Monta Vista connected to Center Street. That is a challenge, but we are making a little headway all the time in that direction. We also own this parcel of property here, coming down all the way through there, and we own this parcel in here that we'll develop. So we can develop up there. It's probably one of the best, one of the last remaining parcels to develop in the city limits of Pocatello. It'll help the tax base immensely. We've added close to $500 million in tax base on what we've done already, and that would be equaled again with the rest of the development of the mountain. But this is only about the annexation of that county property into the city, and so I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, council? Yes, Councilmember Cheetham?
You said two quarter sections, but we're discussing 82 acres of annexation here.
Okay, it's this quarter section here, and it's this quarter section here that comes down and around here, and then it's also this portion right through there.
Okay.
So the engineers assure me that it's that number.
Well, I'm used to thinking of a quarter section as 160 acres. A section 640.
Excuse me, 40s.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, you're right. That wouldn't be a quarter section.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Thank you.
That's what I meant.
Okay, any other questions for Bill Walzep? Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, Mr. Isley. Do you have a wild idea when we might finally be connected to Monta Vista?
Yeah, I do. It's a little bit wild, but it's gonna take this summer and maybe next summer, but maybe all this summer to connect Center to Vista. And then going the other direction, if we're successful in working the property, what our plan is, is to do all of Monta Vista up to Center Street and just come follow the road up instead of developing as you go, and that way we can make the connection because I've been a believer in that connection for a long time, and it would be just monumental for the city. You'd be able to go all the way through from Pocatello Creek to Center on a secondary road instead of on the freeway connecting the, it just would connect everything up. It's wanted to be done, like I said, for years and years.
Great, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mingham?
Mr. Isley, no questions, just a comment. Thank you for your vision, and thank you for seeing this through, or trying to see it through anyway, and presenting this.
Well, I'm a little too old to move anywhere else to do something, so I figured I'd just stay here and finish it.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff?
Jim Englesey, Long Range Planner for the city. As stated, Bill Isley, represented by Sunrise Engineering, has submitted an annexation and zoning application to expand the corporate boundary of the city to 81 acres of property and to zone it residential low density. In a previous hearing held on April 9, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the annexation, finding that the application meets the standards of approval under Section 1702-110, 1702-120, and 1702-170 of Pocatello City Code. This public hearing has met all state and local requirements, and that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Council, any questions? Jim, have there been any correspondence in your office that we have not seen?
No, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, have we had any correspondence in your office?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Taysom, General of Liberty, Pocatillo, Idaho, 83211. Thank you for this opportunity. I, Bill is an amazing person with development. He is a man with great vision with what he's able to accomplish. I only oppose this because I don't approve of some of the things that the city does in development. He has, he's done a great work up in that area, and there's also been some other things that haven't been. And so I'm opposing it because of the processes that are done and some of the hearings that I've been in before where it's just kind of laissez-faire. So I would be for it if the city would do things the right way along that line. We've got developments that have just been slammed in different places, and then the residents pay the price for it, and the costs of being in the city versus the county are hugely different, as well as requirements. So those are my oppositions. Thank you in the name of you.
All right, thank you. Bill, I don't know of anything to rebut there, so we'll go ahead, and then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the annexation and zoning application for ridges at high terraces outlined in Agenda Item Number 6.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Cheetham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
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 Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
We'll move to Agenda Item Number 7 as a public hearing, Pocatello Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan Post. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding the Pocatello Post Plan. Council may wish to adopt the document by resolution as an official city plan. I declare the public hearing open.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Englesey, Long Range Planner for the City of Pocatello. Before you use the final draft of the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails or Post Plan for your consideration to adopt by resolution. Since early 2024, the city, in coordination with Prose Consulting, has executed the planning and engagement process to create the city's first Post Plan. During this process, the public has provided significant input that has informed the plan. A statistically valid survey and online engagement has been provided, as well as three public meetings held throughout the process, to provide information, share survey results, and provide insight into the final plan. The plan has been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who are supportive of the plan's adoption. A work session has also been held before the City Council on April 10, 2025, to discuss the plan. The purpose of the Post Plan is to establish an overall vision and provide strategic direction so that the community's recreational amenities meet the current, public's current and emerging needs. This plan provides an inventory and assessment of current recreational amenities and programs, establishes a park classification system in order to provide streamlined standards to meet the community's recreational needs, analyzes current and needed or desired recreational opportunities, establishes standards for trails and open space, establishes a capital improvement plan for recreational amenities, establishes operational funding and revenue strategies to ensure expected operational needs are met, and outlines measurable action steps to ensure the implementation of the plan. The Post Plan is foundational to the Pocatello comprehensive plan's outdoor-oriented vision element. The adoption and implementation of this plan will ensure that all four goals of outdoor-oriented with their accompanying strategies are met. These goals include, one, develop and implement a comprehensive parks and recreation plan; two, provide a variety of recreation programs, activities, and events to ensure that the quality and quantity of recreation opportunities is sufficient to facilitate recreation opportunities for all citizens; three, develop a continuous greenway system that connects to local neighborhood centers and outdoor amenities while promoting a healthy community through recreation and active transportation; and four, guide and plan for the protection, development, and acquisition of public access to natural resources, amenities within and surrounding the Portnife River Valley. Notice for this public hearing has met all state and local requirements. All written comments from the public received by the Planning Department have been provided to you for your review, and this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Yes, Council President?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just really appreciate all the work that was put into this. I think this is an exciting plan. I was very impressed with the consultant as well. I think they did a tremendous job reaching out to all the different segments of our community and all the different groups, and really just getting input from every corner of this community. So congratulations and great job on a really good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Paulson?
It might be for Ann. Do I wait, or?
For Ann? No. We can bring Ann up.
I got a couple comments from people. They were worried about playground equipment, and based on the survey, whereas like high priority, medium-low. High priority was keeping and maintaining what we already have. I am under the impression that that would include existing playground equipment. Do you think that's the case?
Absolutely. You will see in the Post Plan that they have identified playgrounds in almost all of our parks. It's actually a topic that I will be bringing to you guys in the budget meetings here in the next month, is playgrounds.
Okay. Sweet, thank you.
Okay, super. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Jim, before you leave, have you received any correspondence in your office that we have not seen?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any in your office we haven't seen?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Taysom, the only thing that I might be opposed is because I haven't seen all of this, is I know you do a lot with recreation, like the Cross Country Steve Nordic Center and things like that, and you have equipment and things that people can rent. And again, that's not the government's job. ISU has the same thing. We have private businesses that should be providing those things, and it's in direct competition with them, using their own tax dollars against them. Your role is limited, as I've said multiple times here. And yes, I probably spend a lot of time outside, more than a lot of people do. I've been on a lot of the trails around here, and people need to be outside and enjoying these places, and there's a lot of beautiful places up in the hills around here. But keep in perspective what your role is and the cost to us, and especially if you're in direct competition with private and other public, you know, private entities, individual private homeowners or whatever, and/or versus businesses. And same thing with, I'm not sure if any are involved in this situation, but like especially funding any nonprofit entity like United Way or whatever is an example. I'm in direct opposition to that. We need to limit all of this stuff, and let's get back to people doing what we're here to be and enjoy it. I mean, I was on softball team in high school and young adult, and we got the land, we raked the rocks, we planted the grass, we maintained it. It wasn't the government that did any of it, and it taught us respect, it taught us value and gratitude. And so that's what we need to re-instill, instead of the ideal that the government's gonna do everything for you, and then we get taxed enough for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, Jim, I don't know if there's a reason. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the resolution approving the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan, 2025 to 2035, for the City of Pocatello, and granting effectiveness of the adopt plan.
Second.
I'll get this one.
Okay, thank you. I've got a motion by Councilmember Cheetham and a second by Councilmember Paulson.
Oh.
Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 8, Grant Application International Mountain Bike Association Accelerator Trails Grant Application for City Creek Trail System. Council may wish to approve submission of an International Mountain Bike Association Accelerator Trail Grant Application for City Creek Trail System in the amount of $30,000 to complete a mountain bike trail plan for the city creek management area, and if awarded, accept the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $60,000, and there is a required match of $30,000 to be funded from the general fund reserves.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move to approve Agenda Item Number 8 as listed.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any questions, council? I know we had a question on it. Councilmember Cheetham?
Mr. Mayor, I am curious. We're taking $30,000 from general fund reserves. I'm curious how much money that leaves in that account.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Bonnie Schrader, Controller with Finance Department. We are still working with unaudited figures from fiscal year '24, but are confident that we will not have any large adjustments. So our beginning cash balance in the general fund was approximately $18.9 million. And then taking out our payables and adding in our expenses for the year and estimating those out through the year, even though we're seven months into the year, to give us some extra room, putting aside our required three-month operating expense reserve, leaves us with about $7.5 million. So there should be no problem in meeting that $30,000.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Council President Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9, Airport Grant Application FAA Airport Improvement Program. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the FAA Airport Improvement Program for FY '25 Annual Entitlement in the amount of $1,520,000, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The grant requires a 5% match, which will be funded using state grant funds and budgeted airport passenger facility charge, PFC, funds. Projects to be completed with the grant funding is pavement maintenance of runway 1735 and taxiway A, and completion of the FAA-required airport title... What's that, six?
Six.
Title VI plan. That's right, X is in X, isn't it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the airport grant application FAA Airport Improvement Plan as outlined in Agenda Item 9.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mingham and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mingham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Airport Lease Amendment Driscoll Taphe. Council may wish to approve an amendment to the lease agreement between the city and Driscoll-Tape for a facility at the airport, authorize the mayor's and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The amendment will remove the requirement for lease to maintain personal property insurance. No other changes to the lease are requested.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we approve the airport lease agreement with Driscoll-Tape as outlined in Agenda Item 10.
Oh, second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item 11, Airport Lease Renewal Agreements and Resolutions. Counsel may wish to approve the following lease agreements and adopt corresponding resolutions for property at the Pocatello Airport and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. A, Francie Carpenter, 6,293 square feet of property upon which Ms. Carpenter owns a hangar. The lease term will be 20 years, and the rental rate will be $1,447.39 per year. B, Gordon Nielsen, 1,760 square feet, city-owned hangar, and lease term will be five years, and rental rate will be $324.20 per month. And C, AmeriGas Propane, 0.78 acres of property for the bulk storage of propane. The lease term will be one year, and the rental rate will be $4,861.30 per year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the airport lease renewal agreements and resolutions, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Number 11.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Council-
Mayor, before we vote?
Member Mangum. Yes, sir.
Can I ask your airport manager a question?
Yeah.
If I could, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Allen Evans, airport manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Evans, something occurred to me as we were reading this just a minute ago. Normally, these leases include a stipulation of an annual increase by CPI or something similar. Do these also?
Those do as well, yes. They will all have the CPI included as we move forward.
Thank you.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because I noticed it as I was reading it, too. Any other questions for Allen before he leaves? All right, thank you. Oh, Allen, come back up here. There was.
I am just curious about B, Gordon Nielsen. So it's 1,760 square feet, $324 a month.
Yes. So that hangar is a city-owned hangar. It's one of the nine that the city owns, and that is the rate on those hangars. And his is just coming up for renewal. He's been in there for a while.
I was just thinking, housing, you know, like that seems wildly cheap.
It's different, yes. It is different.
Sounds good. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, Centennial Rainy Park Contract Extension Harmony Engineering. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a contract extension with Harmony Engineering in the amount of $98,000 plus cultural resource time and materials to complete the design of the Centennial Rainy Park Project and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The project is funded by Bureau of Reclamation, Watersmart, Grant, ARPA, Funding, and EPA.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the Centennial Rainy Park Project Contract Extension with Harmony Engineering and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item 13, Buy Water Solutions Contract for Koha Integrated Library System Software Marshall Public Library. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a contract with Buy Water Solutions for ongoing support of Koha Integrated Library System Software and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the agreement is available in the library budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move that we approve the Buy Water Solutions Contract for Koha Integrated Library Systems for the Marshall Public Library as outlined in Agenda Item 13.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Council President Lurick. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Purchase for Road Oils at Idaho Asphalt Supply Incorporated. Counsel may wish to approve a piggybacking the 2025 Power County Contract with Idaho Asphalt Supply Incorporated for certain road oils for the street department's 2025 pavement maintenance season in the amount not to exceed $71,290, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the piggyback bid acceptance and purchase for road oils from Idaho Asphalt Supply Company and authorize your signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item 14. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Paulson. And Councilmember Cheatham had a question for our street superintendent or our deputy public works director slash everything else.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kirkman, items 14, 15, and 16, my question applies to all of them. I'm wondering, for the money that we're contracting, how many street miles we're going to cover?
Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. So for this one, this particular agenda item, we are piggybacking a competitively bid contract for some of our emulsions that we spray on the road. So that would be our fog seal. We're currently anticipating a little under eight miles of fog seal this year that will be done. And I can go through all of them now, or do you want to do them one by one?
I'll do them.
Let's do them. Do them all.
Microseal, that is another treatment that we have, another tool in our toolbox. We are piggybacking the 2024 price. We competitively bid that last year. They have agreed to honor that price, and we're looking at about 12 and 1/2 miles of that for this amount. And the last one is for asphalt and gravel products for both the street department and the water department. That was competitively bid in 2023. Mickelson Construction was the lowest bidder, and they have agreed to piggyback that price both last year, and they're agreed to do it again this year. And we will be expecting to treat about seven and 1/2 miles.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up. Mr. Kirkman, can you tell me where this is going to take place in the city on each of these various projects?
Yes, so we have a very detailed and complex paving plan. And so there is, and if you'd like, I could get this to the council, but we're pretty much touching, you know, a 10th of the city. Or, yeah.
So, if I may, one more follow-up. Are we on a 10-year plan, then?
We are trying to be on a seven-year plan, seven-year rotation. What we did this year is this year, we have a pavement model. So we get surveys of the road from a third-party consultant, so that we're not swaying ourselves of how great we are. We take that data, and we run it through a pavement model, which does a cost-benefit analysis of every road in the town. And some years, we have a lot more of one treatment, and other years, we have a lot more of others. So this year, we're looking at about 30 miles. To get on a seven-year rotation, we need to be about 40. However, this year, the model brought in a lot more paving. So we're paving a lot more than we usually do, and paving is by far the most expensive treatment we do. And so we are knocking out a bunch of very bad roads this year, but that ate up enough money that we weren't able to get the 10 that we'd like to get extra. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, Tom. Hey, could you explain, please, the microservicing material and where that is used and what application, and how that would, you know, vary from the oils and the fog sealing and other things?
Absolutely. So our pavement management plan, we have a lot of different treatments that we can perform, and we try and, our motto is we put the right treatment on the right road at the right time. So quickly, we evaluate roads. Zero is the worst. 100 PCI points is the best, pavement condition index points. So we have certain thresholds of what kind of treatments we do. So for a fog seal, that's our lightest treatment, and those are for the really good roads. And so we do a certain amount of those roads every year because we want to keep the good roads good. Then the next tier down, we have microsurfacing, and that's for the middle-of-the-road type roads. And what that is, is it's an emulsion, it's mixed with gravel, that's applied, and it's kind of like a little mini overlay. We put a bunch of weird chemicals in it, and we shredded fiberglass in it and all this. It's a, we run about $2.50 to $3.00 a square yard for that. The fog seal's about $0.50 a square yard. Then we, next, we move to different levels of paving. We can pave a 10th of an inch, we can pave 2 inches, we can pave 3 inches. Like a 10th of an inch, you're probably looking at $10.00 a square yard. 2 inches, you're looking at 15 a square yard, and then 3 inches is 20. And so what we try and do is we try and keep the good roads good because it costs us, it's like changing oil in your car. You keep the oil changed, it's going to last better for long terms. So we try and put the minimum amount of treatment we can to bleed as much life out of the road. And that was just quick, so.
So a follow-up on that. So once we have the microservicing down, how long will that last?
So we shoot for about 7 to 10 years on a microseal. Depending on traffic volumes, it can differ, but we're averaging about 7 years on collectors, 10 years on residential roads.
And then when that's done, does it have to be repaved?
And then when that's done, what it does is when we put the microseal down, it moves it up higher in the PCI. So in four years, we put a fog seal on that.
Oh, got it.
Four years later, we put a fog seal on that, till it deteriorates to a point that it needs heavier treatment.
Got it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Councilmember Paulson. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Purchase of Asphalt and Related Materials, Mickelson Construction, Incorporated. Counsel may wish to approve piggybacking of the City of Pocatello's 2023 competitively bid contract for asphalt and related materials via Mickelson Construction, Incorporated for the 2025 pavement maintenance season in the approximate amount of $1,688,500, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the materials has been budgeted in the street and water department fiscal year 2025 budgets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move to approve the piggyback bid acceptance, the piggyback bid purchase of asphalt and related materials via Mickelson Construction, Inc., authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols? Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Contract Approval for Microsurfacing Services, VSS International. Counsel may wish to approve piggybacking of the City of Pocatello 2024 contract for Type III Fiberized Microsurfacing Services via VSS International for the 2025 pavement maintenance season in the approximate amount of $743,450, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the materials has been budgeted in the street department's fiscal year 2025 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the piggyback bid acceptance and contract approval for microsurfing services with VSS International as outlined in Agenda Item Number 16, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lorick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, Piggyback Bid Acceptance and Purchase of Sanitation Department Vehicle Mountain Home Auto Ranch. Counsel may wish to approve piggybacking of the City of Boise Co-op Contract via Mountain Home Auto Ranch for the purchase of one 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe in the amount of $59,520.50, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the purchase has been budgeted in the sanitation department fiscal year 2025 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would move to approve the piggyback acceptance and purchase of sanitation department vehicle with Mountain Home Auto Ranch as outlined in Agenda Item 17.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Agenda item 18, Items From the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, you have three minutes per person. Scott Walter?
Walter.
Walter.
Hello, City Council. My name is Scott Walter. I'm here again to raise further concerns regarding the Shropshire team presence at the peaceful protest on April 12. To date, there have been no public statements explaining the Shropshire deployment, nor has any evidence been presented to justify such a response. I searched both online and through the Idaho State Journal for any arrests following the protest that could have prompted the level of law enforcement presence. I also cross-referenced arrest records data through the Bannock County Jail roster. Here is what I found. No arrests appear to have been made on April 13, either Pocatello or Chubbick. On April 14, only three individuals were arrested. Kevin, and I apologize for mispronouncing some of these names, Kevin Sbissidjer, Samantha Schmidt, Jonathan Isponio. All three were charged with drug offenses, not disturbing the peace, harassment, or assault. Additionally, Pocatello Police Department public arrest records postings on Twitter and nicksels abruptly stopped on April 15. However, both these were still active for unrelated content, such as announcing the DEA drug take-back program on April 23. It's unusual, considering that arrest records have been posted consistently through Monday through Friday for the past three months. through Friday for the past three months. This leads me to two concerns, serious concerns. Was someone arrested who records have not been made public or was the sharpshirer response inactive retaliatory force and is the FBI now being used as a scapegoat to cover and misjudgment by the city or police department? If the FBI warning was sufficient enough to warrant a sharpshirer team at a peaceful protest, why has the FBI made no public acknowledgement, confirmation, or clarification? Therefore, I am asking that either the city council and police department release documentation of the alleged threat and a resulting arrest, the official press release, or if they are unable to do so, that they formally request the FBI to issue a public statement explaining what the threat was. The public deserves transparency, not silence. We cannot accept vague references to federal agencies without evidence. If lives were truly at risk, the public has the right to know clearly, directly, and officially. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will move to, we will move to Emma Tribe.
Go, Emma. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Emma Tribe. I am a member of this community and I have some significant experience with autistic children as well as children with cerebral palsy. I'm here to remind the council and urge, yeah, to remind the council of what happened to Victor Perez. I feel it my duty to keep this issue in the forefront of our minds as it was a terrible tragedy that did not have to happen. I, I myself am autistic. My husband is autistic and thus our children will most likely be autistic. It is a genetic condition. It is a genetic developmental disability and there is no guarantee that our children will be as high-functioning as we are. So it really bears weight on my heart that we make sure that this does not happen again. I urge you to make sure that those involved in this terrible tragedy are held accountable and the Pocatello Police Department is trained on the behavior of autistic people and de-escalation techniques. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We will go to Stephen Adams. Here, just hand them all to me and I'll hand them out.
I know you, I know you all care because I can see it in your faces and your eyes. This has been a most challenging time because I started out years ago in 74 to 78, I was in school earning two degrees in psychology in Corpus Christi and working at the state school, Corpus Christi State School. At that time, we realized that there was a need for specialized training on how to address individuals who were having behavioral outbursts and be able to put them in positions without hurting them. And we were certified, we all had to be certified on how to do that. Y'all have one of the most difficult jobs in the city because you represented all the people of Pocatello and that includes the autistic population and those with other mental health challenges. And I know it can be difficult because I've also raised an autistic stepson and I have other children who have disabilities of different kinds. One of the most important things is in the packet I put together is when the officers arrived on scene, Victor, and this is according to tapes put out, video put out by the officers, by the police department, I'm sorry. But anyway, Victor was on the ground when they first arrived. One of the body cams out of the two that were shown had an excuse with why they acted so promptly. It says in their own writing, "Two women were standing in front of Victor, a few feet away from Perez when he began to stand up, holding the knife, continued to place them under imminent danger." Well, if you know the layout of the yard, the officers could have gone behind those two women, one of which was his disabled mom, the other one was a 16-year-old sister that Victor had. But there's a gate that goes out the side near the back of the house that officers could have brought those women out and gotten them out of the way. But they, in nine seconds from the time they hit the corner of the fence, and I'm running out of time, I'm sorry, in nine seconds.
Oh, there you finish really quick.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. In nine seconds, the first rounds went off. This family I visited yesterday again, their heartbreak will never end. And, but, all I'm asking, where's the other two body cams?
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you for the extra time, Mayor. I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We will go to Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, and to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, and ordain and establish the Constitution of the United States of America as the supreme, supreme law of this land and all other laws are pursuant thereof. We are a Christian constitutional republic of we, the people of the United States, guaranteed every state in this union. Those are the fifth and sixth articles of our Constitution. Our children are an heritage of our Father, Mother, and Heaven that we've been entrusted with to raise up a righteous generation. I am a Christian. We are a Christian nation. And yes, everybody on this earth has the freedom to choose who they worship or not. You have a right to choose what you do or do not. We are a Christian nation with a sacred responsibility to teach and provide and promote those principles, those truths of our Christian nation established by our Christian Father, Mother, and Savior Jesus through our Christian pilgrims and founding fathers and mothers who gave their all, just like our combat military, and some who didn't make it back and some who did, who gave their all for us to keep it. There's no, one of my favorite quotes from War and Peace is wisdom has no need of violence. Leo Tolstoy. Wisdom has no need of violence. There is never a need for violence, ever. I served 20 years with Scouts. My Scouts are Marines. They're special forces. They're peace officers who've laid down their lives, including earning Purple Hearts. My sons are veterans. My son Eli served this county as the best coroner this county ever had. They've been hugely harm retaliating against my entire family, including right now. Because we stand true to what we've promised, our Father, Mother, and Savior, and all of us as a Christian constitutional republic of we, the people. A republic is government by the people, for the people, for the good of the whole while protecting the rights of the minority, like children, especially special-needs children, our elders, veterans of Earth itself.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Jesus.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We really do appreciate you being here. And with that, we are adjourned.